...was previously improved using Green Acres Funds. So whenever you want to do something on property that Green Acres Funds were used for, there's a whole process that has to be followed. And this hearing is one of the requirements so that the council and certainly the public can ask any questions they want and give any comments that they want. Public also has until the end of this month, October 31st, to provide comments in writing also, but I would note that these have to be sent to Ms. Kleiner, the town clerk, but also to the DEP Green Acres program. While we're here, we're seeking a subsurface utility easement running along the south and west perimeter of Delaware Heights Park, starting at Carpenter'sville Road and running for approximately 1,400 feet. We're actually looking for two easements. The first would be a permanent 15-foot wide easement totaling 20,669 square feet or 0.48 of an acre. We're also looking for a temporary 10-foot wide construction easement totaling 13,718 square feet or 0.319 of an acre. That temporary construction easement would not be needed for long, and we'll get into what we're proposing to do with it, but probably a couple of weeks, maybe a little longer if you wait for the grass to grow out. We're proposing again to put in a subsurface utility line, which will be buried at an approximate depth of three to four feet. The property would be restored after construction, and it should have no impact on the use of the park. The utility line will meet all state and federal codes relating to this. It's a heavily regulated utility, and it's actually pretty interesting where they do these subsurface utility lines is the line will be run through a conduit, like a PVC pipe, and then it will actually be encased in concrete under the ground. And then there's warning tape placed above it, so if anybody happens to be digging there, you know, they'll see that. The purpose of this diversion is to allow for the interconnection of an approved 10-megawatt solar facility across the street, across Carpenter'sville Road, block four and block 93 in Pohatcon. And the idea is to interconnect the solar field with the electrical substation here in Phillipsburg on blocks 42 and 43 and block 2505. This project will serve a compelling public need and will yield a significant public benefit. Solar facilities are considered inherently beneficial uses, which means that it is universally considered of value to the community because it fundamentally serves the public good. Other examples of inherently beneficial uses are hospitals, schools, and childcare facilities. This requested subsurface utility easement will allow the solar facility to interconnect with the energy grid and will provide up to 10 megawatts of clean renewable energy, which is, in a very conservative estimate, sufficient to power 1,640 homes. This project is also consistent with the state's Energy Master Plan, and it's estimated that over the assumed 20-year lifespan of the solar facility, there will be a net reduction of 115,686 tons of carbon dioxide. As compensation for this proposed easement, as I discussed last week, Green Acres, whenever, even though we're just asking for an easement to bury a line and we're not taking or otherwise disposing of the property, Green Acres requires that we give land in compensation. So we have a four-and-a-quarter, approximately four-and-a-quarter acre parcel of land right across Carpenter'sville Road for the park. That's in Pohatcon. We'll restrict that for open space and recreation use. The town can leave it vacant, can, you know, use it as a complement to the park or do whatever. That's a DEP requirement. For the town, we're offering $40,000, which you can dedicate and use for park improvements. And then the final thing is, you have an outstanding Green Acres issue where some property was improperly disposed of and compensation wasn't given, and that goes years and years back. But until this situation's resolved, the town can't avail itself of Green Acres funding. So you're losing out on some significant revenue possibilities to help preserve parks, playgrounds, open space. In 2012, this compensation was estimated at $60,000, so we'll fund that up to $75,000, which again will allow the town to then seek future Green Acres funding. With me tonight are project manager Rick Roseberry. He can give you a little more detail of the proposed solar line as it runs from the proposed solar facility to the substation, with particular emphasis, of course, on the park. And then if you have any questions about environmental impacts, we have Ray Walker, who's an environmental engineer. And for people, questions related to electricity itself, we have Jennifer Garing. And they're all with Mazor Consulting in various offices. So on that, turn it over to Rick to walk you through what we're planning here and also to explain some of the alternatives that we considered and why really this plan is the only viable plan to connect this. And then again, once Rick's done, we're happy to stay here as long as you want to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Mark mentioned. My name's Rick Roseberry. I'm a principal with Mazor Consulting. I provided each of the council members with copies of the exhibits that I have on display boards here. The purpose of this meeting is really to solicit feedback from the residents and the public, so I've angled it a little bit so that everyone in the audience can see it. If any council members have any questions, I have a problem seeing it, just let me know. The first exhibit I have here is the aerial image of the property. The park is located in the lower portion of the property. We have it highlighted in bold. This is a Delaware Heights ballpark. The easement for the electric line that we were discussing is in yellow. This follows the southernly portion of the ballpark. Just so everybody, orientation-wise, the solar facility is located in Pohatcon on the east side of this plan. The intent is to run electric from the solar facility to the south of Carpenter'sville Road, across the ballpark, down to the Black River Western Railroad, where we've already secured permission to run the electric line over to the substation. The time point is over by the Board of Ed near South Main, and I think that's Limekill Road. So that's the route. So the whole purpose of this project is to get the electricity from the solar field over to where the Board of Ed property is located. Two things that we have to satisfy. First is the alternatives. I mentioned, how do we get it there? We looked at many, actually, we looked at every possible route possible. I'm going to highlight the three that were, we had considered at first somewhat viable that needed more research. The first alternative is obviously the route that we're proposing. This requires some type of easements from some private property owners and also from the Green Acres diversion process, and this is the route that we're pursuing at this time. The very first route that we looked at was utilizing the Norfolk Southern rail line, which is adjacent to the facility. As you can see, goes in an east-west direction. Ultimately, we would have been able to pick it up on South Main Street, follow South Main to make the interconnect. Norfolk Southern ruled that out and denied that request predominantly because the bridge that is located by South Main could not support the electrical lines on them, and they did not want the additional utilities within the public right of way, their right-of-way. So that was deemed to be not a viable alternative. The next option we looked at was utilizing some private property, and it was actually to the south of the ballpark. The property is owned by Mr. Krunch, and we looked at that piece of property to see if that was viable. If we were able to have an easement across that property, we could then talk to the toll bridge commission about utilizing the I-78 right-of-way to get to the railroad. And as we started getting into the history of his property, we found out that there's a deed restriction that goes back a long ways that restricts it for agricultural uses. Once again, rules that rules that property, and that ruled out as a viable alternative. So those are the three alternatives, the one we're proposing, the one using a tunnel line, and the one using other private property. The only one that is viable at this time is the route that's through the ballpark. And then the second item that we've, Mark touched on, is WSA Green Acres as a compensation. I've highlighted on this plan the 4.7 acre piece of property that is intended to be used as compensation dedicated to the town. It's directly across from the ballpark. You can use it for whatever you wish, but it would be under the same restrictions as the Green Acres.
Do you want to just shove it maybe to the other side? I'll get that review of the park.
So the second exhibit I provided is a blow-up of the park property itself, and this exhibit is rotated different from the other exhibit. So north is on the left side. We have Route 78 on the south. This follows the town line. Pohatcon is to the south. Phillipsburg is to the north. The intent is to come off Carpenter'sville Road, and we're hugging the tree line along the southern border of the property. Goes adjacent to the soccer fields until it reaches the Route 78 right-of-way, where we will follow the right-of-way and the fence line passing the tail court at the land that's owned by the railroad. So the intent was to keep it as far away from any of the public facilities, keep it as close to the property line as possible, and this route is relatively open and unobstructed. And as Mark mentioned, it's an underground line that, once they install it and backfill it and seed it, you won't even know it's there.
Okay, and that at least concludes the formal part of our presentation. Raise your right hand. Rick, you swear that the testimony that you just gave was the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, of course.
Very good. Thank you.
Continue.
So now, you know, again, that concludes to the extent we have a formal presentation, but again, any questions that people have, we're here to answer them.
Sure. Also, I'd like to, if we can, Stan Trek, our town engineer, is in the audience as well. Stan, would you like to provide your opinion with regard to the program?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I don't have to do that. Do it afterwards. I have to thank the team for working with us for pretty close to probably a year now discussing what this, how to do this and how to provide a needed green energy program close to where we are. I fully support this. A little history too. You did mention the diversion that the town has, very old diversion. It's what Bessemer School was, beat it over to the town. Well, the property that was Green Acres now has lots on it, and that wasn't properly disposed of. So Green Acres finally caught up to the town, probably back in around 2010 when we built this concession stand. We did that under a Green Acres grant, and then we were asking for the final disbursement of the grant, which was, I think, was around $70,000 was the final bill. They said, well, no, you can't have that because of this diversion. So we went through the whole process of diversion. We actually had a scoping hearing like this. We were providing property that was adjacent, and we had the scoping hearing. It was just before Christmas when we showed, when it came to the scoping hearing, it was like two days before Christmas. And we settled on that, but then the Green Acres came back asking for compensation, which was up around $60,000 at the time. So appreciate this opportunity to clear up that diversion. So in addition to the money owed to the state, we also get the reimbursement back, and now we have the opportunity to go forward finally with other Green Acres funding. So this has a positive impact on the town in many aspects, and I can see no downside to it. Quite fully support it.
Thank you, Stan. At this point in time, we can open it up to the floor. Motion to open the public hearing to the floor. Roll.
Councilman Woods?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Vice President Peter. Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman President Holbrook?
Yes. Does any member of the public have any questions regarding this project?
I do. Joseph Trench?
Yes.
The expert handler. I got a question on the four acres that is in Pohatcon. How would that settle up any Green Acres issue in Phillipsburg? Are you going to annex the land or something?
The four-plus acres, the one that we're talking about now, that's not to clear up your old diversion, that's good here now. It's just going to be deeded as open space. I don't think Green Acres cares like what town is. They just want to see property set aside and preserved.
All right. The next question is, the four acres that's going to be in Pohat, are they going to subsequently tax us if we improve it?
They likely will, yes.
Okay. So where's the benefit? I'm not trying to give you hard time, but did you do questions here?
These were a lot of my questions. Yeah. I guess we'll get there then, or if somebody has the answer, I don't know the answers. They were my questions still.
I don't have a ready answer for that, but I'm happy to reach out to the Pohatcon tax assessor and find out how they will treat this, you know, assuming it's vacant park land or unapproved property, and I'll see what the assessor says.
Okay, he's our tax assessor as well, so.
Hopefully, they do as well.
They might be able to. They may be able to work out a deal with each other.
But we'll definitely get that information.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Dickie, you can go.
Still Tim in 230 South Main Street. The power, as it's being generated and what have you, there used to be a movie called Om, if you're familiar with that at all, where the high tension lines, you could light a fluorescent bulb. What's the EMF effect on this hitting three feet under the ground or four feet, as it may be, to the surrounding area, to the people in the area that are going to be walking in that area? And we'll go ahead and do that one first.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give connection with this hearing will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
So in fact, the EMF for an underground line, this is a 33 KB line, so it's 33,000 volts. Typically, what you see in the ground is anywhere from 33 KB up to 69 KB. That's the general range. EMF is in fact less underground than it is above grade. So the overhead tension lines that you see are providing more EMF tube than what's underground because these are not only a PVC conduit, but also encased in concrete, protected by the soil, and because of their proximity to each other, the three cables to each other, they in fact cancel out EMF. So what you're getting is probably less than what you get from your microwave in your house.
Does it generate any heat?
No, it does not. The heat must dissipate because otherwise the cables would be impacted. So the heat is dissipated in the soil.
So eventually, it can produce heat in the soil?
No, it doesn't. It dissipates very quickly. It's not, it doesn't build up heat, it dissipates.
The heat in soil accumulates also?
No, it doesn't.
It's like an insulator?
It's one of the reasons for using concrete as well. Concrete dissipates heat much faster than soil itself, so you put it in concrete, the soil probably will not receive any heat.
Okay. Crossing the road, will this be a tunnel or will this be torn up and then repaired? And if so?
The road, if I have to trench?
It's generally trenched.
So you're not going to pile it or drive a line underneath it?
I can't answer that aspect.
Yeah. Typical construction for this is trench. Trenching it.
If you drive, if you tunnel it, you can't encase it in concrete, which is a much better construction, so you would rather trench it.
They require to have a road open permit from us. We'll be dealing, bonding, and approving whatever's done out there. That's another step.
And infrared, fixed hatch picks?
Yeah, we have infrared, remember? We're doing that.
That's why I brought it up.
Of course. It'll look good.
Also, because that property is on the other side of the road, and if it is at some point in time designated as a play area, that means people would be having to cross that road with traffic. What's the property to the south of that? Is that also Pohat?
That is, that is also Pohat.
Why can't that be done adjacent to that property rather than across the road into the cornfield?
We don't own that.
Well, who owns the cornfield?
The cornfield across Carpenter'sville Road or what's just out?
In other words, you're putting that four acres up here.
Yep.
Why not put it over here or over here? That way it would be adjacent to the.
Oh, yeah, no, I hear what you're saying, but we don't, we don't own, but we don't own that property.
Own this property.
I'm not sure who owns it, but we have four and a quarter acres out of it. Mark, who technically is that?
I think it's township property, and I believe it's regulated.
I think we own it. We own it already, Green Acres.
He's over here.
Mr. Trench, you're speaking of the four-plus acres in Pohatcon?
South of, south of the playground.
That's all we want.
You're speaking of the four-plus acres in Pohatcon that they're proposing to give to the town in exchange for the diversion.
Right. And who owns this property south of the playground?
Dick Phillipsburg owns that.
It's a tree form. We made it a tree form.
Okay. Because it would be a hazardous, theoretically a hazardous condition if it's a playground that is added to across the road for people heading across the road.
Well, that's really more of a planning board issue if the town really decides to do that. I mean, things like, you know, pedestrian access and ingress and egress, that would all be covered by the planning board.
But if you look at it beforehand, not subsequently to it, you know, you won't have to bridge over it or put some stoplights in or electrified crossing at that point. Common sense.
Right. The purpose of the proposed donation of the four-plus acres in Pohatcon is to satisfy DEP's requirement because you're having a diversion, proposed diversion, through encumbered property. So the state wants to see something given back in return. So you're taking property that's encumbered, you're running improvements to that, what are you giving back in return to maintain the status quo, so to speak? And that's what the applicant's proposing to do in Pohatcon with the four-plus acres.
It makes it an issue down the road. Building a Warren County Library on 519, but you have houses across the street to get to the library. How are you going to cross the street without taking a possible of getting hit?
Councilman.
I can assure you that before we start making new improvements on this proposed lot, we have a lot of work to do on our existing recreational facilities, so that concern about that lot would be sometime in the far, far future, probably for maybe my kids to discuss.
Just being.
No, I understand that. I appreciate it.
Being an Green Acres advocate on, you know, 30, 40, 50 years down the road, you know, how is that going to be a benefit? Okay? And to concern, it's not on this agenda, but it was spoken about before the meeting, right? Councilman Bay and Councilman Woods. Why are the garbage trucks throwing our recyclables in with the truck?
We're only answering questions that have to do with the scoping hearing. Thank you.
Oh, one more thing. How is that going to benefit the residents electric-wise in the town of Phillipsburg?
It's not, you can't dedicate on the electrical grid, you can't dedicate like power generated at this site goes here, and all this kind of gets pumped into the grid, but it'll benefit in a more global sense, again, by reducing over its lifespan, over 115,000 tons of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. It'll benefit by helping the state meet its Energy Master Plan goals, which calls for a large percentage of the state's energy to be provided by renewable energy sources such as solar.
And will it give benefits to Pohat residents? Because I know when we, the solar plant was proposed before at the Old Ingersoll Site, they could go across one road to provide power for the residents as long as it didn't cross more than one road.
I can't speak to that. I know that this line is proposed to tie it to the substation where it would then be distributed throughout the grid, the PGM.
Mr. Dickie.
Don Dickie, Randall Street, Phillipsburg. I have one simple question. You're crossing a major road, it's a major throughway. How is that going to impact traffic and for how long?
The crossing of Carpenter'sville Road, it can, you know, a typical crossing like this would probably be achieved without doing a complete road closure. You could do it in single-lane closures with typical traffic control. I would estimate this to be a two-to-three day job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm assuming that, excepting for earthquakes, this is the state-of-the-art, 100-year state-of-the-art technology. Would that be right? And they don't even design for more than that, right, in these times? I just want to be counted as a member of the public who thinks it is wonderful that we are attacking the global warming problem right here locally, and God bless you. Keep it up, and I want to be yay, hey, abourah.
Thank you, Mr. Ruck. Mr. Hayes?
I'm Rob Hayes, 33 Tom Street. So what is, I guess my question goes, what is the timing for this? And the reason I'm asking is because I won't say the soccer club's name because I don't represent them specifically. This is our big field, that's our senior field. That's half of our program. And this goes, feeds are both used from March to early June, and then again from late August until November. So my question is, what's the timing and what, one, what's the impact on our organization? And two, what should we do to better prepare for this?
So there's a couple of things, obviously, we're going through a process with Green Acres right now that requires State House approval. I think the earliest, we're estimating that that could be achieved is next spring. That's the earliest.
We're hoping to get a March 2019 meeting, but that's not certain.
Right. So assuming that works, and we get approval by the State House for the diversion, the intent is to start immediately thereafter.
How long is the project going to take?
The total project, which includes the installation of the solar panels, is anticipated takes six months. This project on this site can be, and honestly, if it took them three weeks, that would be longer.
Okay, so there's a potential of it happening in the middle of the summer, or will we look at it?
Oh, definitely.
Okay. And the other question then is, sometimes the lie or instant vapor, like football programs again using these two fields. So I guess that's a conversation, this is going to affect you, I guess it's a conversation for later than. But my only concern right now is our organization, so if you do it during the summer, we will do it.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I believe that, you know, town councilors would probably, during their discussions, make sure that we coordinate all the work with all the appropriate agencies so that we're not shutting down the park or the region. And certainly, that wasn't part of it.
Just to add to that, basically, the conduit runs that go in those fields can be placed anytime. So anytime it's been scheduled to avoid conflict with the town, those can be placed. And then the pulling the cable through is only a day. So it really could, you know, be worked out with the town.
We really want to minimize the disruption to the extent we can.
Sure, and I figured that, I just think that would kind of sound a little.
Without getting into the numbers, I'm just curious, who is paying for the cost of the construction, the modifications, and any maintenance to this where it connects to existing utility companies or where it's connected to? And who owns that solar field that this is being? The solar field's going to be coming through Phillipsburg, but who owns that? And who's going to, who maintains that? Who's getting the benefit of that?
Pohatcon Solar Farm owns the solar field, the solar facility. That's who I'm here representing.
So it's a private company?
Yes.
Now, is that private company going to contribute to these costs? Like when this goes into the power line at the end, something's probably going to have to be modified. It's just making a hole in the wall, but that's going to be done by this private company?
Yeah, they have to pay for it.
Okay. And also for any maintenance reasonably foreseeable down the road? Actually, again, not getting into the numbers or anything like that. Now, is there any way that that's going to be set up in some sort of an I-2 if the power goes out in town? power goes out in town? That somehow, or the, not the homeowners, but at least the town can do something to maintain their rights or something? Because when it's down, it's down. So that's not going to supplement the existing grid.
No, this is, this is a grid-scale solar project, so it feeds the grid essentially. If the power were to go out, it's generally a transmission issue, this plant would be cut off. So it would no longer generate.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? Sir?
My name is Jake Cronz, I'm owner of lot 94, lot 2.02. I guess first of all, to clear up any misunderstandings, I've been in, I've been trying to be in communication with the group for, I don't know, pretty much most of the summer. And the last communication I had, I spoke to a gentleman named Mark Bellin, and he had called me and represented basically that, you know, pretty much the same, my site didn't work because they had a deed restriction of some sort, which I said, "I'm not aware of it." Only that I, when I initially purchased the property, I gave Encore Bank, I think it was, I gave them five years to come back in condemnation. Other than that, there was no just restriction. And what I was done, I asked him to send me a copy of that report, title of the report for the property search. I never received it. I went ahead on my own, I ordered a title search from PLS Title and Settlement Services. And I believe maybe, Mark, I think maybe somebody misread. That's my thing, if you want to look at this. Lot 2.02 is not included in this. And if that would be the...
Restriction you're talking about, please.
Because I've been told by the title company in my attorney that there's no deed restrictions.
Well, I don't see it here, and I know I did review title where, where there was a clear restriction for agricultural use.
So if we could just get the concerns for the record, and then the gentleman would be able to negotiate or speak about it?
Well, I have no idea. It'd be certainly a surprise to me, if my title company tells me, "No, you're right, no restriction."
Okay.
So on record for that. As far as the project, first of all, I'm a private property owner. I guess I've been informed tonight that there's going to be some other private keys that you'll have to be obtained, which, you know, from other private property owners, right, Mark?
Uh, yeah, that's my understanding.
And you're still going to have to run down the Bridge Commission's property?
No, I think we're avoiding the Bridge Commission.
Okay. I've been a resident of Pohakon Township 60-some odd years. And I was on the back, I was chairman of environmental or economic committee when I was here. And Pohakon does not run anymore parks. They have, that's which children today said they had when I was in school, or maybe not when I was, but 30 years. And they have a big problem maintaining parks. I've been involved with rec, so I know. As far as the property they're speaking of, where the park's going to be, I'm not sure, but that might be an area that gets wet when it rains, a lot of water sets there. So to use that for a park, doesn't make sense to me. As far as, as far as the going across my property, now you don't have to have an intermunicipal agreement where you're using, you're working on a project that could approve on Pohakon Township, has to go through Phillipsburg. Now there's an intermunicipal sort of agreement, which you do across my... There's no concerns for any kids, what we're going across the sheet to park, if it could ever be built. I would question whether Pohakon Township is even going to have any interest in, you know, in having a park in another park there. And I believe, I'm not sure, but you can, you can research this. I believe that the land that's just south of the soccer field in Phillipsburg, I believe that's owned, somebody told me, 'cause I looked at it at times, that the property's still owned by Pohakon in Phillipsburg, that's it. I don't know. Doesn't make sense to me.
Back in the, back in the early 90s, it was proposed, matter of fact, it was owned by Harton.
Yeah, drink.
Yeah, it was owned by Harton. And we got that, and we build a tree form there. We had to use it for agricultural, or something with agriculture, so we decided to build a tree form, which met their criteria.
Right.
And that's the way it's been all this time.
Right. Well, I'm not really sure.
We pay taxes on that, for Pohakon.
Okay, because I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Somebody told me that one time.
Yeah. Yeah, I can remember that.
Didn't have any interest. So if you look at that, I guess it's restricted in title reports.
Yeah, well, you know, we'll take a closer look.
Yeah, because I, Bill couldn't, Mr. Edelstein couldn't beat it. What I said, well, there's no doubt.
Because one of the things we're going to have to show to Green Acres' satisfaction is that there's no reasonable or practical alternative. So if it turns out that, you know, maybe we misread the title report or something, because Green Acres, we have a court reporter here who's going to produce a transcript, and we have to submit a transcript of this hearing to Green Acres so they can see what kind of questions were asked and whatnot. So clearly, you know, Green Acres is going to take a close look at, at your property and see whether we can use it. Other than the deed restriction that we, that we believe is there, maybe not. But there's also, I understand significant, I'm sure, I always understood there's significant engineering challenges with, with running a line through your property, and then we still have to deal with the Bridge Commission and Route 78. And they, they're not really amenable thus far, I haven't welcomed.
I would, I would really think, I would question that because, you know, I've done purple soil look tests there, where 10p clean, all right?
Yeah, so what you're calling it up.
And where you're running that, you know, I know that road pretty well, that's been back and forth there a million times. And we use that in farm, but actually, we used to own personal of all Phillipsburg, my ancestors way back when, all right? She thought there was houses or everything. But to make the long story short, I think that's going to be less environmental practice.
We can only put on the record the issues with the scoping hearing, and then you're more than welcome to speak with Mr. Peck after.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because I just sort of wanted to let them know.
No, I understand.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly take another look at your property. We've looked at it very closely. We would much prefer to avoid the whole Green Acres process, which is a colossal thing in the net. So, but we'll take another look.
Yeah, I think maybe also mine's probably less environmental practice, shorter run. And straight across the street, from what I see, I mean, honestly, I was never noticed on the, on the solar park, you know, so, but there was a state approval or whatever.
So is there anyone, anyone else with any questions? Mr. Cronz, you're finished?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You're welcome. Is there anyone else? Okay, there being none, I need a...
Well, I just wanted to, you wrapping up, I probably interrupted, but just again, to remind the public, you can still submit comments for another 15 days, but they have to be in writing to the town clerk and also the DEP. And I just wanted to thank the public for your courtesy and your, your good questions tonight. Sometimes, you know, you get tarred and feathered in these, in these hearings, but this was, this was very, very good, and I appreciate council's support. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Peck. May I get a motion to close the public portion of the hearing?
Second.
Roll, hold on.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Pete Olmeyer?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Council President Holton?
Yes. Public portion is now closed. Moving forward.